The Topeka City Council Meeting will please come to order if you would rise as you are able to give your attention to Deputy Mayor Jeff Cohen for the invocation. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim is a longtime resident of Topeka, having moved here in 1973 and raising two sons here. He began his career teaching secondary school mathematics and finished the last 15 years of his career in the IT Department of Washburn University. In the interim period, he engaged in a variety of endeavors, including small business ownership, as well as 23 years in the ministry, serving churches in both Kansas and Missouri. Please welcome my dad, Jim Cohen.
Will you pray with me? Father, I come before you on behalf of these people, this council, and this city, and I give you thanks for this great place to live. I pray, God, that you would give wisdom to those on the council, that the decisions they make might be right and righteous, and they would always keep in mind the best interests of the citizens of Topeka, and to be good stewards of this responsibility they've been given, as well as good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Thank you, Father. I ask you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening, and we have here three of the board members of the Shawnee County Historical Society, Tim Renshaw, Chris Schultz, and George Bernheini, who is the president of the board. And Topeka has a significant legacy, heritage of, starting from the civil rights, actually, of a leadership role in our nation in the civil rights era. And certainly, one of the most important, or one of the earliest, would be John Ritchie, who started, came here at a very early date, and then established, as we know, participated in the Underground Railroad. Well, the significant part of this is, I have to, it's 250, 200, okay. 200 years ago, he was born. So I think it's important that we commemorate this, and we have a proclamation. Whereas John Ritchie was born on July 17, 1817, and whereas John and Mary Ritchie relocated to the Topeka-Kansas Territory in 1855, and whereas John and Mary Jane Ritchie, from their home, known today as 1116 Southeast Madison Street, owned and maintained by the Shawnee County Historical Society, participated in the Underground Railroad and the freeing of escaped slaves in the period from 1856 to 1861. And whereas John Ritchie affirmed the principles of equality and inclusion, as demonstrated by his work in securing freedom for the enslaved and the promotion of equal rights for all, regardless of race or sex, and whereas the Shawnee County Historical Society espouses these same principles, and whereas July 17, 2017 marks the 200th anniversary of John Ritchie's birth. Now therefore, I, Larry Wolgass, Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim July 16, 2017, as John Ritchie Day. And on that day, you're going to do some celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're delighted to have the proclamation and your recognition of Mr. Ritchie. John Ritchie, a true pioneer of Topeka and Kansas Territory, as the mayor mentioned, was born July 17, 1817. We are celebrating his birthday, his 200th birthday, a day earlier, on this coming Sunday, July 16, at the Ritchie Home, which is located at 1116 Southeast Madison. The event will take place from 1:00 in the afternoon to 5:00 in the afternoon. We will have music. We will have ice cream and cake, of course, to celebrate a birthday, and we would be delighted to have each and every one of you come and join us to recognize this fine pioneer and gentleman of Topeka and Kansas history.
Can you guarantee it'll be cooler weather on Sunday, of course? And hand fans. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. And we have a presentation. The interim city manager, if you would introduce, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you know, our municipal court has been a leader in an area that we call Clean Slate Day. This is a program that Judge Guyer enacted about this time last year, last fall, and it was met with such resounding success that we decided to do a new and improved version a couple months ago, and we would like Judge Guyer to come and give an overview of what happened that day and how it's new and improved and plans for moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor and governing body. It's like we're getting some power point up there. I'm going to go over Clean Slate Day 2017. We did it in mid-May. As you know, we had our first Clean Slate Day back in October of 2016. We did it again in May, and it was a great success. I want to tell you a little bit about that. I want to give you some statistics, talk about a few really cool stories that happened that day, and then, most importantly, publicly acknowledge everybody that helped with Clean Slate Day, our community partners, as well as our city employees. So just as an overview, Clean Slate Day was an opportunity for folks to come in. If they had outstanding warrants, they could come in and get their warrants pulled and set new court dates without fear of arrest. If they were eligible, they could get expungements. And then, if people had fallen behind on their payments, they could come in and learn about different ways to either make their payments or other alternatives, such as community service, things like that, in order to take care of their fines and punishments that had previously been imposed. In addition to that, we also had a resource fair, which I'll get to in a moment. That's what we did that day. One thing that's not reflected on this slide is why, and I always like to give the why. First off, I always like to say it's a public safety issue, and some people might wonder how that could be. If you watch the news, you'll see a lot of, maybe some distrust with law enforcement, the court systems. That's happened for several years now. A lot of people don't understand, if somebody has a warrant, law enforcement has a duty to go and attempt to arrest that person. A lot of people are running from officers these days. Officers, most of the time, have a duty to chase. That puts officers' lives in danger. That puts the individual who's running for something potentially as small as a traffic infraction. It puts their safety at issue, and it puts bystanders' safety at issue. So I really think taking care of some of these issues really impacts public safety. Secondly, I think it's financially responsible. By allowing people to come in and pull their warrants, as we say, and set a new court date, they're not going to jail. And if they're going to jail on some very small, at times, traffic infractions, seatbelt infractions, there's some other higher-level stuff, but a lot of times, these are just small traffic infractions. We're saving taxpayers' money because we're not paying for these folks to be in jail, to be housed in jail. Taxpayers pick up that bill. And finally, the one thing I really want to talk about is that, as a community, the city council, the city manager, mayor, everybody I've worked with in the city, my hometown, has always talked about caring about their community, and that's, this really helps put those words into action. Everybody really came together to make this a success. So that's kind of the why we do it as well. So I'm going to go over a few statistics. I'm going to give you a little bit about how they compare with the first time around. These numbers are approximate. They may, we may be off by a couple digits, but not by much. We did 80 expungements. For those that don't know what that is, expungement, that removes a record of conviction or arrest, and it removes them from most databases. So, for example, on a job application, most job applications, if you were asked on that job application, "Do you have a conviction for this misdemeanor theft?" If you have it expunged, you can say no. Those previous convictions are a real barrier for some people in getting employment. And there's a big process. Not anybody can walk in and get an expungement. A period of time has to have elapsed, and punishments have to have been served, fines have to have been paid, things like that. So 80 folks came in and got expungements. That compares to approximately 20 from last time. So we had four times the amount of expungements this time, approximately. I'd like to point out, and I don't know who it is, but we had some anonymous donors that helped with the cost of those expungements. There's a filing fee with that. So these people were able to come in. I know last time, I loved to tell a story about a woman who simply couldn't afford the filing fee to get an expungement that was preventing her from getting her dream job. So this was an opportunity for people just to get that little nudge they needed to get on with their life. So we had a lot more expungements this time. 90 folks received legal advice. We had five different attorneys there. These were all attorneys in private practice. They get paid by the hour, and they were not paid that day. So they truly did volunteer their time. We had five attorneys there. People could come and get free legal advice. They could get about a 10-minute consultation. It wasn't limited to issues that we would see in Topeka Municipal Court. If somebody had a quick question about a bankruptcy, or a child support issue, or something going on in another matter, they could go and consult with attorneys, and I'm going to recognize them by name here shortly. We had 130 people come in and had warrants pulled. That's about the same number we had last time. From memory, I think we had 127 last time. So we had about the same number of people, but that's 130 people that potentially aren't either running from law enforcement or aren't hiding out in their homes because they're afraid of law enforcement, because they know they have a warrant for their arrest, and they're afraid to come to court. We had somebody that had a warrant from 2009 that came in and finally got it taken care of and set up a new court date. 47 people came in and was offered a plea deal by the prosecution. They took it, and they were immediately sentenced, and they are either serving their jail time, served their jail time, paid their fine. So we got those off the books. Again, that's efficiency. That's my staff can do other things. Law enforcement can do other things. Five people came in, and there were warrants out for five people because they had skipped out on their jail time. They had been sentenced to jail and did not report. Five people came in and asked me to put them in jail, asked myself or Judge Warner to put them in jail. That's the exact same number as last time. In fact, one person turned themselves into the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office and asked the sheriff's officers to take them to Clean Slate Day so that they could go to jail. So that still amazes me, but it's a good thing. These people are taking responsibility for what they had done in the past. 72 folks came in and were behind on their payment plans. They had been fined previously, and they were not making payments. They came in, and we reset a payment plan that they could make. So they're now paying their debt to society. That compares to 15 from the first Clean Slate Day. So, again, that's a good thing. 67 people came in, didn't know what they wanted to do, but they set a new court date. So they came in and took care of their business. They took care of their warrants, set a new court date, and I don't know all of them, but I've recognized several of them that have appeared in front of me, so they've kept their word to us. 191 folks came in and got either driver's licenses or restricted driver's licenses, and that is, that's probably the biggest, I've learned since I've been on the bench, the biggest hurdle to getting gainful employment and getting on with your life is that driver's license issue. Because I think I've said before, if you're convicted of driving while suspended a second time, state law mandates five days in jail. I don't have any discretion over that, at a minimum. So you have people risking jail time by not having a driver's license. Again, we had an anonymous donor that was willing to, if you qualified financially, pay $25 to get that restricted license. The most tears of joy that I saw after people went to Driver Solutions and then would come and see me is the fact that they had a new driver's license, and they could print them off right there. They had their paper driver's license. So that was, that's a great thing. That is a true barrier to employment, and we got folks taken care of on that day. And that's really, that's really nothing that I did, or Judge Warner did, or anybody in the court system did. I can really say that was the anonymous donor, anonymous donors, excuse me, and the Department of Motor Vehicles, and volunteering their time. And then finally, we had approximately 700 people attended the resource fair. We had Clean Slate Day in the Topeka Performing Arts Center this year, as opposed to the actual municipal courtroom in the city council chambers. Before they could get in to see me or see Driver Solutions, they had to walk a hallway in T-PAC where we had 14 community partners there that gave information on job, job opportunities, how to get your GED, your high school diploma, you name it, housing, credit counseling. We had the Boys and Girls Club there. So it was, it was really a great thing. They had to walk through that. We had approximately 350 people that walked through our previous resource fair. We doubled that, and I know we got folks in touch with some real resources they need. I can tell you 100%, it's a fact. Some people got jobs, were able to gain employment out of it. The Kansas Board of Regents was there, and they're the ones that helped with the GED program. I know for a fact that people have been in contact to try and get their GED. So it was a, it was a great success. One of the things I hear when I'm on the bench is, a lot of folks are done on their luck when they're in front of me. This is a perfect way to tell them, "Okay, you know, I can't find a job. Well, we're going to give you that opportunity and see if you're serious." And I'm happy to say, most everybody is, and they're very appreciative. And the other thing about the community partners, we didn't have enough tables for everybody that wanted to take part, so I think that speaks volumes about, about our city. So many people wanted to take part, volunteer their time and help. We just simply didn't have the room, even though we moved it to the Topeka Performing Arts Center. So a few success stories. I know there were some talked about on the news and in the Capital Journal. I think Amy put some up on the Topeka's website. Here's some that you may not have heard already. I already told you about, somebody showed up at Shawnee County Sheriff's Office and asked to be taken to Clean Slate Day. That was good. We had, we had a TPD officer. I, we specifically requested no law enforcement presence during Clean Slate Day for fear, because there was this fear that this was all a ruse, and it was a sting operation, and people were actually going to be arrested. So we really didn't want a real visible law enforcement present there to try and alleviate those fears. We had law enforcement officers at both the Topeka Police Department, Shawnee County Sheriff's Office, really had to make a judgment call. They arrested some folks. They had to take them to jail, but they knew we were doing Clean Slate Day as well, and they made the decision to discreetly come to the courthouse, get myself or Judge Warner. And so law enforcement really helped out in getting these people the help they needed, when law enforcement very easily just could have driven to the jail and booked them in and went on with their day. So I think that's a real testament to both the Topeka Police Department, the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office. We had a woman that was so desperate to get an expungement, was having financial difficulties, that she waited a couple hours and was able to have her expungement granted, but because of the wait, she had been informed that she had been terminated from her employment, where she was supposed to be there. All credit goes to the Department of Neighborhood Relations. They were able to call this woman's employer, get her her job back, and then a volunteer drove her to her job. So that's a good story, especially because we had, again, citizens to Topeka stepped up and helped this woman. She was able to get what she needed out of Clean Slate Day, still keep her job. We had, it was a hot day that day. We had a gentleman that walked all the way from Wanamaker. He had a medical emergency once he got here because he was overheated, but we were still able to take care of him. And again, we had volunteers that were able to give him food, water, some medical attention that he needed. He was clearly down on his luck and would have needed probably some food or water, whether he had meditated to Clean Slate Day that day or not. He was able to get those resources that day, and again, another volunteer was able to drive him back to his home safely. So those are just a few of the stories. I saw plenty of others that appeared in front of me. A lot of, literally, a lot of tears of joy, and a lot of people showing me their new driver's licenses, so that was really neat. And what I really want to do is, I really want to thank everybody that took part in this. The five attorneys, and I want to name them by name, are Kevin Cook, Jonathan Snyder, John Paul Washburn, Ashley Rolodur, and Cecilia Mariani. Again, these, these are folks that get paid by the hour, and they took their entire day or most of their day to come and help out and give free legal advice. The resource fair exhibitors, Boys and Girls Club, City of Topeka Human Resources, Community Action, Inc., Housing and Credit Counseling, the Kansas Board of Regents who helped with the GED program, Reesers was there, Salvation Army, Topeka Literacy, Topeka Metro, Topeka Rescue Mission in Vallejo. And again, we had to turn exhibitors away. That's how many folks in the, in the community wanted to help. And then finally, I, I know I'm the face guy up here, probably talking about this, but truly, this is a City of Topeka effort, not just the City of Topeka Government, but a true community effort. This could not have happened without the Department of Neighborhood Relations, specifically, the City Attorney's Office, specifically, the City Prosecutor's Office. The AmeriCorps volunteers were absolutely amazing that we had. And then just law enforcement, Topeka Police Department, they were very helpful. So everybody came together. Our IT unit, we had to wire stuff in T-PAC. They, they were there in a flash, got things going. And especially the court clerks, the workers in the court clerk's office, our probation officers, and our court security officers. That is a long day, and there's a long wait at times, and sometimes tensions can, can get high. Sometimes we can't help people that want to be helped, but everybody at the Topeka Municipal Court staff that works for me did a phenomenal job, and they need to be congratulated as well. So that's my presentation. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Thank you for your leadership, first of all, in establishing and putting it together and getting everyone involved. That's the big part. And certainly, then, as you are expressing, we want to thank also all of the people who assisted, made this work, and as you say, it's only that, the community-wide effort that makes it work and makes it as successful as it is. Thank you very much for your work. Other questions, comments? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge Guyer, I would like to thank you for thinking outside the box. I bumped into John Paul Washington that day, and he was excited about helping people. And when I, and I have another person to send to you. You know, so many times, people get scared of jail, and we do. We just need to educate them and see where they're at and where they need help at, and I, and I give credit to you and your staff. And I think that's great that you got the Department of Motor Vehicles involved. So thank you again. That was awesome that they were there to help on contact, and I just, I can't say enough about it, because I seen and bumped into a lot of people that were really, really excited of what was happening, and they're like, "When's the next one?" You know? So I, I think we get busy and we forget, or we throw, you know, we throw that ticket, and we don't think no more about it, until we get stopped. And so I applaud you, and everybody's effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. Again, we're indebted to you and the leadership and for putting this together. Appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we should comment that we, our new location, and interim city manager, would you want to comment a bit on, on why we are here?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As the body knows, when you adopted the CIP last, or earlier this spring, it included an eight million-plus-dollar project for city hall renovations. Turns out, that was serendipitous timing, because the last two days, we've had some challenges with air conditioning, both on the council side, on the court side, and today, on the main city hall side. We sweated through the morning, and it was awfully humid, but we thought there was a chance that the equipment might be replaced by this evening, but we didn't want to take that chance. So rather than take a chance, we decided to move here. That equipment, by the way, as I've noted to you before, dates from 1952. So we've gotten good service out of it, but it's probably outlived its useful life.
Thank you. And we thank the police department for their help in making the facility available and for doing all that they can to have a successful meeting. We'll proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgass?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
DeLa Eastla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
And Councilwoman Schwartz is not here. There, she's attending to an illness in her family. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and counsel, as you know, we have two executive sessions following our meeting. Go to next item for appointments.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Tazara Isam to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill an unexpired term and a full term, expiring in January 1, 2020.
All right, counsel, your pleasure. Councilman Jensen?
Move to approve.
And Councilwoman DeLa Eastla, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The mayor does not vote.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the appointment is approved. I would like to introduce Tazara Isam. If you would stand, please. He is a self-nominee, interested in serving in the city and working on behalf of the human relations issues. Thank you very much for your service and for your appointment. Proceed to the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the Kansas Mariachi Festival. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting visit to Topeka Inc. an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Jeff Cohen granting Happy Bassett Brewing an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 concerning noise prohibitions. D are minutes of the regular meeting of June 20, 2017, and the special meeting of June 26, 2017. And there is one cereal malt beverage application for Diamond Jubilee at 810 Southeast 15th Street, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, counsel, your pleasure. Councilman Emerson moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. All those in favor, vote yes. I'm sorry, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. Proceed to the action items versus an ordinance.
A is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning seatbelt fines, amending City of Topeka Code Section 1015-020, and repealing original section and creating section 1020-020.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Every year at this time, it seems like we're introducing an item to you that we'll call housekeeping, and it's the result of the state legislative session. That dominates the Topeka landscape for a couple months. This is one of those items. In particular, this year, one of the items that they pass that impacts the city is they increase seatbelt fines, adult seatbelt fines, from $10 to $30. That $20 additional dollars will go to the state of Kansas. The City of Topeka will continue to have the $10 that we've always had, but the additional $20 will go to the state of Kansas. Again, this is a housekeeping item and designed to make sure we're in compliance with state law. As a fun fact, I don't know if he's here, I don't see him, but Luther Gagne, who's a police advisor, advised me this afternoon that this is the only criminal case that comes before a municipal court that does not have court costs. So there's a fun fact for you that I learned this afternoon, and now I'm sharing with you. Stand for questions.
$30 even.
$30 even.
No court costs. All right. Questions for Mr. Interim City Manager, Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, why do we have to do this? I mean, it seems like it's a money grab from the state. So why do we have to approve this?
Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, it's, it's a uniform state law, which means we don't, if, if it were a non-uniform state law, we would have the ability to charter out of it if we wanted to, but because it's uniformly applied to all cities, we have an obligation to make it part of our city code as well. And it's part of what we would call the standard traffic ordinance, which is adopted by the body every year. Basically, we have to. That's the best reason I can give you.
Have a choice. Councilman Jensen?
Along the same lines, is there a reason why we can't just reference the amount the state law requires instead of having to- state law requires instead of having to change our code every time they change it?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'll maybe see if the city attorney does.
I think that every time, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jensen, every time that the fine gets increased, it's just reiterated by number. I think that's probably really the best way to do it.
Okay.
That way, you don't always have to go back and look up state law and see what the amount is. It's just clearly stated in the SPO.
Okay. Good enough for me. With that, I will move to approve.
Moves to approve. And Councilwoman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, right hand?
We have eight yes, Mr. Cohen voting now.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Go to item B in ordinance.
B is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber concerning service fee levied in Topeka Tourism Business Improvement Districts creating Topeka Municipal Code Section 365035.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The establishment of a T-bid within the city has been a multi-step process. The body has participated in a number of action items that have helped implement this tourism business improvement district, and this is the, what we hope is the final step in this process. As you recall, in early May, you established a T-bid district, the district itself, which is the entire city. The next step in this process is to enact the ordinance, if you choose, which will impose a $1 per occupied room service fee for, per night, for hotel room rentals. You probably noted in the ordinance that if, within 45 days of publications, there's not a protest, then the ordinance becomes effective, and then we begin collecting those fees. We, hoteliers, begin collecting those fees in January of 2018. I would note that Kurt Young is in the audience again to speak to any specific questions, and I would also entertain any questions that you might have.
Other questions? Discussion? This is really, we went through, we passed this earlier, and then there was a protest period. Correct?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. There was a protest period to protest the district.
Right.
And that timeframe has passed, and so now, the next step comes to establish the fee.
This is the next step, and then this is really one of the last, to get it underway, to implement.
Should be one of the last, and then until collections begin.
Okay. Councilwoman Claire?
Did anyone protest this?
No. There was a, Councilmember Claire, there was a 45-day protest period, and that expired June 29th for establishing the district. And there will be another 45-day protest period that will apply to this next component, which is setting the fee.
But there were no?
There were no protests on establishing the district, so the district's established.
Okay. Councilwoman DeLaEslah?
Thank you, Mayor Olgas. I would just like to reiterate my appreciation to the hoteliers that have taken the initiative of putting up their own funds so that we could have a thriving downtown plaza. I think that this is just a great example of what public-private partnerships are doing, and you guys are going to help us continue improving our community. And with that, I would like to make a motion for approval.
Okay. It's been moved to approve. Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Any discussion? Councilman Jensen?
I just want to echo Councilwoman DeLaEslah's comments.
Thank you. Other discussion, comments? Not, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance is approved. Congratulations going forward. Item C, a resolution.
C is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber approving the distribution of the third quarterly payment to the Topeka Performing Arts Center.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As the body knows, this is another one of those items that's come before you before. As you know, in February of this year, you adopted a resolution which spelled out the terms of disbursement for payments to T-PAC, Topeka Performing Arts Center. And those terms specifically require T-PAC to turn in metrics to city staff, and then for staff to comment on those and bring those to the body for approval within a timeframe after those get turned in. So, this is a second of dispersments that we have done under this resolution, and I would ask Nikki Lee to maybe address some of the metrics that she noticed and make any additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Governing body, I'd say the most important document here, it would be the progress report, which is one of the attachments provided by T-PAC. Some very exciting numbers here. As you can see, the overall fundraising, they're over 54% of their annual goal, and that really speaks to the final payment that they'll get at the end of the year, is they have to meet a certain fundraising target to get that money. It's really an incentivized payment, so it looks like they are on track to receive that. And as you can see, they break that out and a few other kind of detail out how they got it to that fundraising number. Another very important number is the Friends of T-PAC. These are important, too, just to show the support that they have. So, as you can see, they have 50 members through quarter two, and they've also made some progress in hiring some of their internal staff, specifically, as you can see, their business manager. That's something that's been very important to them. So, per the resolution, as long as they are making progress towards their goals, then we would recommend approval of this payment.
Other questions or discussion? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you. Nikki, is this the second set of money that we're giving them?
So, this is actually, thank you for the question, Councilwoman. This is actually the third payment. It's the end of the second quarter, but the first payment was made in February when you all originally approved the resolution. The second was in April, so this is actually the third one, but it's in reflection on their, through their second quarter of the year. And then the fourth would be slated for October 11th, and the $30,000 would be whenever they meet their fundraising goal, we would bring that final payment back to you all.
Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion? Your pleasure. Councilwoman Hiller?
Move to approve.
We move to approve. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have nine yes.
Those opposed?
We have eight yes, Mr. Cohen voting now.
Eight having voted yes, the resolution is approved. We go to item D, real estate report and disposal.
D is approval of a real estate report and method of disposal for real property located at 1116 and 1126 Northwest Van Buren.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Again, disposal of property requires consent from the governing body, approval from the governing body. You haven't heard of this issue before, so I'd like to have Neighborhood Relations Director Sasha Hahn come forward and give you a brief overview.
Mr. Mayor, governing body members, good evening. This evening, we're excited to talk to you about a project that we have in partnership with Cornerstone of Topeka. You have included in your packet a real estate report, an aerial that shows you the location of the lots in question, and then a real estate agreement that has been approved as deformed by our legal department. As you may have read in the cover sheet, this is a project that we are working on with neighborhood stabilization funds that we acquired from the state of Kansas. We purchased these lots in North Topeka located in approximately Morris and Van Buren Street in 2014 for infill housing as part of our SORT project. We have been able to successfully partner with Cornerstone to locate two single-family residential affordable housing units on the lots. Cornerstone will ultimately own and manage the properties. It will be affordable rental units for a 20-year period. The zoning is correct, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Are there questions on the project or discussion? Councilwoman Claire?
This is my district, and this is exciting. I drove by there a couple of times just to look at it, and I think that's going to look so good, having those houses in there. It'll really help the area. I'm just excited to hear about this.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Councilwoman DeLaEslah, seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the real estate disposal is approved. Go to item E, notice a public hearing date.
E is establishing a public hearing date of August 8, 2017, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2018 operating budget, setting the maximum expenditure limits, and authorize the publication of the public hearing notice in the Topeka Metro newspaper.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've had a number of budget discussions on the 2018 operating budget. What we are asking for action-wise tonight is, as noted by the clerk, we're asking for one motion, but it will do three things. First off, it will establish a public hearing date for the budget of August 8, 2017. Secondarily, it will establish a maximum expenditure level for the 2018 budget, and those expenditures are noted in your packet on the notice of the public, of the notice of budget hearing, which is on the last page of your packet for this item. And then the third thing that does is authorize the staff to publish the item in the newspapers so that it can be viewed by the public. As we noted after the June 20th meeting, when the council gave us the most recent direction on the budget, we would come back to you and explain what we did in terms of getting to a balanced budget which does not impact the mill levy. And so, I'd like to run through those things with your permission very briefly, so everyone's aware of the steps we took. And those are outlined in the budget memo that our Budget and Performance Manager prepared for the body. But specifically, there was one amendment made by the body on that June 20th meeting, and that was to add $20,000 additional dollars for arts funding. So, that's been done, bringing the total commitment for 2018 to $30,000. Five other items that were impacted were a almost $250,000 reduction in the property tax estimate, based on the valuation estimates from Shawnee County, so we made that change. Looking across the budget, we noted that our fuel expenses seemed high compared to what we were experiencing, and so, we took a hard look at that and decided to make about $100,000 in fuel adjustment across the budget, across all funds, but particularly the general fund. Those bring us in line with actuals from previous years, and we're comfortable that the way we're trending right now, that shouldn't have, will not have an impact. I won't say shouldn't. It will not have an impact on operations. We did increase vacancy credits by almost $90,000. Again, one of the questions that may come to your mind is, will that have an impact on our ability to recruit and fill positions? And the answer to that is no, it will not. We will continue to recruit in the same manner that we have been. We'll continue to offer academies for both police and fire at appropriate times so that they can fill their positions as needed, and we'll continue to allow departments to fill the positions as appropriate, provided they pass personnel review muster. We shifted $50,000 from the general fund to the middle fuel fund. And then finally, we did look at the Topeka Way to Work Program, and basing it on the numbers that we had this year and what the program that we're offering this year, we reduced that budget to a budget of $30,000, which again, brings us in line with what we're doing this year and the goals we're accomplishing this year. So, with that, I would stand for questions.
Okay. Questions and discussions? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't support it if we're going to take the $20,000 out of the budget, because we haven't all voted on it, on the Way to Work. Let me say this. The first year that we had the Way to Work, we didn't have a guideline, an income guideline. We let kids come in and apply, okay? So, what happened was, this year, for whatever reason or whoever did it, put a guideline on it, that they had to meet an income guideline. So, what we had was, we had an income guideline with children, but these children could not pass the drug test. And this is my thing, I love all kids, okay? And so, my thing is, if we have kids that want to work, let's put them to work and not put that income guideline on them. I mean, when I look at how big our budget is, and we don't have anything to really offer our kids, to make them responsible and to make them community members, working community members, it bothers me. It really bothers me. Out of our budget, $50,000 is not a lot of money. I'm sorry. So, that's one of the issues that we had. We would have had more applicants if we didn't have that guideline. I'd like to take that guideline away, and I'm sorry, if they can't pass the drug test, it's welcome to the real world. Because if you're not, if you can't pass that drug test, then you can't get that job. That's reality, and to me, that's what this is doing. It's bringing reality to some of these youth to give them something positive to do. So, I would like to look at those guidelines again and put more youth to work, because I know that we can, and I hope my colleagues would follow me with this, but $50,000 is not a lot. It's not a lot. The first time around, we had so many applications that our, we couldn't even fill them all, that the kids came out. It was so nice to see that the kids came out dressed up. We had, they had to be dressed ready. They had to do that interview. They had to go through the whole reality of everything, and they did it. Yeah, there were some kids that didn't get the job, but that's reality. That's reality. When you're applying for that position, and if you're not qualified, or you can't pass the drug test, or you don't, you can't follow the guidelines, but I will be opposing that, because I hope we could find that and get that back up, or we could vote it as a council. But I would hope that my colleagues would support our youth. When I look at these young people that are out here getting killed, 17-year-old, I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry. We have to drag them in to mentor them. And I can't remember his name, the gentleman, Sasha, what's his name, that's in Housing and Neighborhood Development. You know who I'm talking about? The African-American gentleman. The African-American gentleman, is he still there? He talked about in Housing, Neighborhood, and Development, is it Richard? Is it Richard?
Councilwoman, I think you're talking about.
Development Services.
Richard Faulner. Yeah, he's in Development Services.
Richard, right?
That's correct.
Faulner. And he talked about the same program is what brought him to who he is today. The mentoring is what turned him around when he lived in the projects. So, that's why I'm so compassionate about that, is because I want to do that for Topeka. We talk about getting young people here to stay and live. Well, we got to start even younger than what this program presents, but that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and I'm going to go back this year after the budget and look at that criteria, and hopefully, we can stick with that criteria and put young people to work. What are we losing? They're taking that money and they're pouring it right back in our state. They're right back in Topeka. They're buying cell phones and clothes, whatever, whatever they're doing. But it's making them feel good about themselves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Interim City Manager, and, because you said that you thought we would be able to have the same number with the reduced fee, with the reduced.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, yes, and as you know, we reevaluated the, or evaluated the program at the end of last year and made some tweaks, which we thought were going to be more effective. We'll do the same thing at the end of the program year, this year, to try to make it a more effective program. One of the things we're currently talking about is being able to take this $30,000 and use it as match for either a community grant or another private sector partner so that we can, in fact, bring more kids on. So, we're excited about that. We certainly don't have all the details, but it's certainly something that we're talking about, making this a good collaboration between the City of Topeka and private sector partners.
Yeah. Councilwoman Ortiz?
You know, we're just now starting to roll this program. It's going to be hard. When we talked to Tony, "Why aren't you mentoring kids?", and he said, "Osha won't let me hire those kids." That's what we're going to run into, although I'd love to have some kids go work for Henderson Construction over there. Wherever that's at. But I'm just saying, that's the problem we're going to have. I sent, and I'll send you that email, it was over $100,000 grant for youth to do what this does, and Monique looked it up and said, "Because we are a city entity, we can't do that." So, to start rolling it off, it takes money to start rolling it, and then you're going to have to kick back. I'm going back to the Shawnee, the commissioners. I asked them last year to match us. I asked us to help us, to give us some sites, and that wasn't done. I asked us to help us, to give us some sites, and that wasn't done. But in order to do this, I think we need to really stay at that, and I think we could use more kids and get more kids off the street. That's, that's just how I feel.
Okay. Actually, during, when we get into this program, actually, we start planning for it in the fall, I believe, don't we, in the winter? And actually, as it, if we see there's other areas that need to be done, perhaps there could be adjustments made as the program gets underway.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I mean, we share, Councilwoman Ortiz's enthusiasm for this program. There've been some hiccups. I'm not going to sugarcoat that, but we understand the value of the program and what it can do, even if we just reach one kid. But we're, I mean, we're confident this $30,000 allows us to maintain the same level that we have as now. And if we can make some hay with the conversations that Jackie Russell's been having with some potential community partners, we think it can be expanded even further.
Councilwoman Claire, you got to.
And so I was just going to make that self, that clear to myself, is we're not cutting anything. We're maintaining, at this point, the program. We're not cutting, right?
Councilwoman, that's correct. At a minimum, the program will, I mean, this matches the, the level of funding for the number of kids we have at present time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think you hit on the, the true future of this program, which is community partnerships. We can only employ so many folks here, because we only have so many types of jobs in the city, but pulling in community partners that can contribute to the program with both financially and in other job opportunities, I think there's a real possibility there, and I'd like to see that aggressively expanded.
Thank you. Councilman Delaissla.
Thank you, Mayor Walgas. And, and that's where I was going to go with this. I think that it's so great to hear that we are partnering with other private entities that are not, not only going to be able to provide the opportunities, but also different employment activities that they could be engaged in, and, and organizations that, for example, at Westar, where we work, where I work, 75% of the kids that are interns end up more than likely getting employed. And what a great place for them to start getting really engaged early on with corporations right here, meeting the people that they could potentially be working with. So I'm excited about that, and I would not like to see the program cut, but I think that what you're proposing is an expansion, if, if my understanding serves me right, with the private, the private sector.
Councilwoman, I said this to someone in a meeting today, that hope is not a strategy, but we're hopeful that, that what we can, and I don't mean that in any sort of smart alec way, I mean, but we are hopeful that the conversations we're having will, will bear fruit, and that we'll be able to expand it with some private sector partners. I might, I might also mention, we have, in addition to the Way to Work kids, we also just brought on three interns from the University of Kansas MPA program, so, and we're tapping those folks into Topeka and the Forge Group and all the other interns in town. So we're coming at this from a number of different perspectives, I would say.
I'm sorry. Yes, certainly.
And could you speak to, what is the, the level of responsibility that then our staff also has by running the program? Because when you have young interns, I could tell you that when we're running our program, there's the internship for the individuals that have college credit, but then the individuals that don't have the college credits, that you're trying to get in there. Could you speak a little bit to the time intensity that, that a staff person has to have if they have a student with them?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I, I would say that when staff takes on a Way to Work employee, they recognize the, the oversight that's going to be needed with, with that particular individual. I mean, we're talking about young kids. I just spent, well, Bill Feindler and I just spent our lunch hour yesterday talking to them about city management and city planning. And, you know, I have three teenagers in my house, but I haven't been in front of a group of 11 teenagers for a while. And it, you know, doing that on a daily basis takes some, some work, because there's only a certain number of things that these children can do, and there's only a certain number of ways we can keep them busy. And so that does bring with it some challenges. They're good challenges, and we're certainly willing to work through them, but it does bring some challenges.
Okay. Councilman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, I, I like what I'm hearing about where this conversation is going. I've always been a little troubled, actually, that we were sponsoring and managing a program ourselves. We're not in the business of doing that. When somebody else mentioned earlier that the Department of Neighborhood Relations saw a grant, but it wasn't, cities weren't eligible to get it, they probably needed match money for it. And so, and if we're a partnership with somebody who was eligible and had staff that were trained and used to working with young people and placing them and following them up, which is a, a much bigger role than we would have, we could still do placements and, and be, be involved, but it's got the potential to be bigger and better. I'm also very excited. I, I've been particularly working on the JADO side with Go Topeka and the, the new vision of workforce development through joint economic development for us and the county, and inventorying just what all is available for adults, and making sure there's a full ladder of services and a referral network for, for adults, and certainly also looking at the training programs and opportunities for young people. I think we're going to be making some advances through our economic development investments as well, that we can tie in together with this. I hope so, anyway, through the course of the year. Thank you.
Councilwoman Claire.
On another note, on the vacancy credits, you said that wasn't going to stop departments for recruitment for TPD or the fire. Therefore, that money can all go away if all vacancies are filled. Is that how it works? So this is only 89.7 if we don't fill them, but as we fill them, that number will go down.
Councilwoman, I'm not, I'm not catching the gist of your question, but I'll try to explain it like this. I think we have naturally occurring vacancies in our budget. I might ask Nick Hawkins to come forward and give you an exact number, but they happen every year, no matter how well we recruit, no matter how well we treat everyone, people, there's just turnover. And in the general fund, that amounts to about $3 million, $3 million a year. That's sort of our trend, you know? Even if we try to fill every position right away, there's just vacancies, and someone who's been long-tenured retires, and you bring in someone at a lower salary. And so those are all those kinds of savings. So this number, this $89,000, doesn't put us anywhere near that $3 million trend mark that we've seen over the last couple of years.
Then why is it there? And what is that number? I don't get it.
Okay. Well, this wrong.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. The total vacancy credits with this addition is approximately $2.3 million. Again, like Mr. Gerber just stated, we've averaged about $3 million a year for the past, I would say, three or four years. And so that's a trend that we believe will continue, and, you know, obviously, the hope is that that number would actually go down with more departments being able to hire to their, their full staffing capability. But I think even with that, you would still see probably a level even above that $2.3 million number, even with that.
The other thing I would say, Councilwoman, try to explain it a little bit like this, is all cities have these vacancies and savings realized from vacancies. Some cities explicitly budget for those and include it as part of their budget assumptions. Other cities don't. Everybody kind of knows in the back of their minds that the, these savings are going to occur. All we're doing is explicitly saying, we think it's going to be about this much, and we're specifically itemizing it in the budget.
But 89,000 is a long way from 2.3 million. Why isn't it?
That's an additional 89,000, on top of what was already proposed.
Which was?
2.2.
Okay. Okay, got it.
The way we came to this 89, I think I'm, I'm with you now. We just came to the 89 to fill the gap. So that number is just our, that was our filler number. So besides the kind of three other things that we did to get to the gap, that's, we filled in the difference with this. So the 89 isn't, that doesn't tie to anything other than filling the gap.
And this was to meet our reduced assessed valuation, proposed revenue that we will receive as a city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just going back, we're, we have before us this item E, and there's three things in it, sets which we have by, all have to do, set a public hearing date, we set the maximum expenditure limit, we authorize the publication of the public hearing notice in the newspaper. And then adjustments were made in that, based on the reduced assessed valuation. And those are some of the things, and that relates to the one that Councilwoman Ortiz is talking about.
And I have another question.
Yes. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Let's go.
Another thing, I, I think we're missing the boat. I'm really sad with the Way to Work. I'm, I'm just going to put that out there, and I'll leave that dead horse alone, but we are really, really missing the boat. Continue to watch these kids in the streets, and I will give you some J AAA figures on the kids that are out there. Maybe you guys need to see that. I, I don't know. Maybe you don't understand it like I do, but it's, it's very serious. And it really saddens me that, that we can't find 20,000 to help our kids. Another thing I'm concerned with is this reduction in the fuel cost, Doug? Because ever since me and Richard have sat on this council, even when, I, I never understood why fuel was so high, but, but the fuel prices were low, and they said because we were locked in by contract.
By contracts.
Is that, is that, is that, are we sure we want to reduce that? Are we still locked in by a contract? Because I know for years, that's what they would tell us every year. And so now to see this, especially at 102,000, that kind of scares me. So have we looked into that? Do we know, or?
So I guess what I would explain, and I don't know that Nick and I have had an in-depth conversation about how we lock in our fuel rates, we'll fill them in, but we lock in the rates, but not the amount that we're using. So we have an agreement saying that our rate for next year is going to be, call it $2 per gallon, but it doesn't say that we have to buy a million gallons. I mean, it sets the rate in place, and then we set the budget amount based on that rate times how much we think we're going to use.
So is that what the contract says?
So the contract locks in the rate, but it doesn't say, here's, it doesn't say, here's your rate, and here's how much you're going to use. It says, here's what the rate is.
Right.
And then how much we use really varies depending on multiple factors, you know? What we're doing in the streets, how we're doing it. And then the rate that we lock in also does have to do with the market a little bit. So it's, really what it does in reducing the fuel is, it removes a little bit of flexibility for departments, because that's where they're wanting to be, just like in your own budgets. You don't want to under-budget how much you're going to need for gas, because you just need it. So it removes a little bit of their flexibility, but we've looked into it with all the departments and still agree that even in reducing this, it leaves them at a level that they're very comfortable with. I don't know if I'm comfortable with that, with your explanation.
Okay. Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to establish a public hearing date of August 8th, 2017, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2018 operating budget, setting the maximum expenditure limits, and authorize publication of the public hearing notice in Topeka.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilwoman Delaissla has second. We have a person to speak on, in public comment on this, Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governor Boddy. I'm not here to support or, or take away from this. What I am here to do is to make some comments, and I will be at that budget hearing. If I can't, I will email in advance, but I've made a number of those. One of the things I keep hearing when I come down to budget hearings over the last few years is how we're looking for productivity. We're looking for more efficiencies. Unfortunately, when I dig into the budget, I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing that we're actually addressing those kinds of problems. I'm still questioning why we don't have GPS on all our city vehicles, why we can't track where our employees are at all times, which might help with your fuel consumption. We had a, kind of a hit to the budget in that there's $220,000 less to the city budget because of assessed valuation that's not as high as we projected. Well, why is that? Is it because of falling population? Is it because we've got seedy landlords that don't maintain their properties, run down the values of properties, run down the values of neighborhoods? Why aren't we asking the tough questions, how to solve those kinds of problems? I'm asking them. Are we really looking at productivity and efficiency in, in, in this budget? I'm opposed to any new hires, other than police and fire, which I think was addressed. If you have a falling population, we've lost 1,500 people in the last five years, you don't need new staff, other than those emergency services. So you shouldn't even be asking for that. I'd, instead, I'd be asking, planning, what are they going to do about the falling population? What are they going to do to get our population back up? I'd be asking Neighborhood Relations, what is your department doing to address a falling population? That's part of your budget. It's going to affect your bond rating eventually. Losing population is not a good thing. It's going to affect your economics, it's going to affect your ability to recruit companies. They want to see a growing population, not a falling population. I hate to give you that news, but that's the truth. That's what they're looking for. I still am hearing a lot of disparagey, or disparate, excuse me, numbers in how, got to watch that timer over there, how we do our engineering development, and our engineering designs on our roads, which is a high, high cost. I'm hearing as high as 20% on some of these road projects, and then over on Fremont Hill, it's 3%, because I just asked them. And I'm going, I'm sorry, that's, that's way too big a number. Why am I seeing such disparagey in numbers on California and, and not on Fremont? These are questions that management has got to ask. That's part of our budget, and it's long before we get to the budget. We've got to start looking at how to bring some efficiency, and bring some efficiency into our workers, our contractors, making sure we're not having to repair the same pothole every, every three days or three weeks. I would like to see less money spent on street staff, and more money spent on letting the private sector repair some of these potholes, and put some warranties on their work. And let's see if we start getting a lot more efficiency that way, and a lot happier citizens. Because, you know, the two areas I hear that we have real needs in efficiency and productivity in our, our city staff is in code enforcement and in street repair, and in how the streets are repaired, and making sure it's done timely, and that the projects are done timely. So I know that goes a little far off your date. I intend to be here. I hope other people will at least email and call their council people and tell them their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That completes a public comment on that item. We have before us a motion and second to approve the notice of public hearing date. There's no other discussion. If there is a question, Councilwoman Claire.
Yeah, I'm going to beat the horse one more time. Because I really take offense that, because I won't vote for the 50,000, I don't want these kids out on the street to work. That is not the case. If you can go out there and bring those children in, and they want to work for the city, we can make room for that. But yes, there's kids running around. I'm a teacher, I did foster care, I adopted, I know that. But we can only do so much unless we go out into the street and round them up. They have to do their part to come to us, which I think, if they did all come to us, we would make, as he said, room for that, and be able to afford that. But I just wanted to, to make that known, it's not because I don't want these kids to work.
Okay. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just to be clear, all we're voting on here is to establish the hearing date, correct? We are not necessarily endorsing these shifts. You're simply telling us what things staff, staff has done to address the shortfall in property tax.
Councilman, at, at its core, that's correct. You're, again, you're though, you're voting on three things, the public hearing date, maximum expenditure levels, so it would be difficult to exceed those maximum expenditures without going through this process again. We're just simply explaining the steps we took to get to that maximum expenditure level.
And it's our hope, right now, there's things working behind the scenes, that we hope to have 50,000 in this program, but right now, you're saying, if that doesn't happen, here's one way to balance the budget. There's a thousand ways we can do it, but here's five ideas you guys have.
Would say, rather than committing to 50,000, we hope to have additional funds with private sector partners.
Correct.
Whatever that number is.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Councilman, Councilman Ortiz.
Yeah, I would like to respond to Councilwoman Clear's. This, this was her, her cut, and you are a teacher, and this is the second year that this program has been in effect. I, I can't help how you feel. All, all I know is, it hasn't really had a chance to get off the ground. If, if I had the opportunity, and staff would have told me, how many, how many applications did we have the first year, Jackie? 300 and something? I, we didn't have to round up kids, we just didn't have enough money, you know? But we could do some rounding up on kids if that's what we needed.
Good evening, everyone. The first year, we had about 350 applications. And if I could provide some clarification, we did have about 194, 95 applications this year. Part of the challenge is applicants, and the interest of the children was different, probably based on the guidelines. The other challenge that we have is available positions within the city organization. And so as far as, there were more kids that could have been placed, we placed all of And so as far as there were more kids that could have been placed, we placed all of our first-tier children that passed all of the background, the drug screening. But we were also limited on our capacity of positions. So it's, it's a twofold issue of how we ended up with where we ended up with the number of kids that we have this summer, and I want to just make sure that that's very clear. It's not just because of kids not being interested, it's our ability to place them based on some of the child labor restrictions and the demographics of the applicants, because those individuals that are under 17 are very limited in the type of work that they can do, and that is the majority of the applicants that we receive.
And me, and I've talked to Jackie about partnership, and it's, it's going to take time to work on. And if this council remembers correctly, the city manager found extra money to hire another kid the first year, because we had so many applicants. But, you know, I could round them up. If you guys give me the money, I could sure round them up and put them to work. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions? We have a motion and second to approve the notice of public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the hearing date, the operating budget is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. We then go to the announcements. The first item is the preliminary agenda for next week.
The July 18th agenda consists of one proclamation, National Night Out Against Crime. We have a presentation on the Futures 2040 Plan. We have a special event resolution for the 2017 Capital City Jazz and Food Truck Festival. We have a noise exception for the National Night Out events and Specs Bar &amp; Grill. We have expenditure ordinance for May 27 through June 30. We have a resolution for the Fire Department on lease purchase agreement for self-contained breathing apparatus. We have an ordinance and corresponding final plat for Woodland Park at Soldier Creek Subdivision Number Three, that's located in Northwest Topeka Boulevard and Miniger Road. We have an ordinance amending Topeka Municipal Code Section Title II regarding departments and employees, and an ordinance amending Topeka Municipal Code Title 13 related to utilities. And we have a notice of public hearing for the 2018 Consolidated Action Plan for August 8, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Then for the announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just have one brief announcement tonight, and that is, having just come off celebrating the Fourth of July, I've gotten some feedback from the public, from the PD, from some of you regarding our fireworks and how we approach those in the city. If you have comments that you would like to address to me, and if it's something you'd like to, like us to look into, we certainly can. At this point, we're not planning on doing anything necessarily, I just want to throw that out there, that as you have comments or questions or concerns, please relay them to me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I did receive several concerns. I think I'd like to talk to you about that. Other than that, the only announcement is I'll see you at the Fiesta. Me and my girls go ride the Ferris wheel, so we'll see you there.
All right. Thanks. Councilman Harmon, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. I too had quite a bit, quite a few comments about fireworks, so thank you for bringing that up, City Manager. And there's a strong enough feeling in one sector, and some of that discussion was on Facebook or Nextdoor or both, that I actually have somebody who, if there isn't a public meeting that's put on by the city council, they're going to put one together, so I would be happy to hook you up. People are just concerned about the disparity between a 10-day sales period and a four-day fireworks period, and that the people may just think that whenever they're for sale, they can be shot off, and it's just hard to do that education and maybe just too hard to reconcile. And I did a fair amount of explaining that, that the council, when they set it up, wanted to provide a long enough sales period that the entrepreneurs could, could make, make it worth it for them to set up, and the city, of course, people wanted to get sales tax and all that. But certainly the concerns about pets and PTSD were major. I think people cleaned up a little better this year, though, than maybe in some years, and so that was a plus. So thanks, thanks again, and District One's interested. Other than that, I would defer to Councilwoman Ortiz on the Fiesta with one comment, though, and that is that District One's Ward Mead Neighborhood had the first, as far as they knew, first neighborhood association float in the Fiesta Parade.
Yes, they did.
And, and it was awesome. They even decorated the wheels of their float, and I'm really proud of them. So with that.
Councilwoman Claire.
With the Fiesta, I did tell them I would make this announcement, it is on their Facebook page, but there are several taco trucks set up on the 200, 300 blocks of Chandler that are not associated with the Fiesta, and none of the money goes then to their fundraiser. And there's no parking on the south side of Seward. And I had another call, there used to be, there isn't now, so don't park on the south side of Seward. Otherwise, we'll see you there.
Okay. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is Fiesta time. I think that's sad when our trucks cannot join the parish of a tradition that has gone on forever and ever, ever since I was a little kid, because what we're doing is raising money for, for the parish and for the kids. So when we start to have private vendors, that's, that's really sad that they cannot let the Fiesta take advantage of that. But anyway, it's Fiesta time, come out and get you a drink, a ride, or whatever, whatever you fancy. It's going to be hot. It is always hot on Fiesta time, so we just, we just welcome you to come over. And I'd like to personally thank all the TPD that goes out of their way to make sure that everybody is safe, and they do a fine job on that. I would like to announce that one of our, one of my NIA members, Frank Hoag, I think we all know him, passed away Saturday. And this is really hard. I've been really tearful for him. When I ran in 2005, I went up on his porch, and he met me with a cold glass of water and said, what are you going to do? What are you going to do for the kids? What are you going to do for the city? And he's always held my feet to the fire. So it's, I'm kind of really, really disheartened. It's, it's just, it's just a sad time, but I want to share a little bit, if I may, Mr. Mayor, about Frank Hoag. Frank got a Hamburger Helper grant that started the mural at the Water Department, because he didn't want people leaving the Expo Center, not knowing any of the history about Topeka, and that's what he did, and that's why the mural's there. And he's continued to get grant money and to continue to go on. This is, this man's in his 70s or maybe even 80s. It was him, Michael Jackson, and Mark Bennett, and they did a, did a, Tom Bennett. They did a great job, and they've continued to do that and find funding, because they understand that if kids take a part in painting and graffiti, positive graffiti, they won't mess it up, and they, they wanted that. Chesney Park is all for kids, and they've done a great job of advocating that park for the youth in that area and, and grants. And also Frank went on a trip to, I believe it was Arkansas or Philadelphia, one of them. And he came back and says, Sylvia, the city is not doing anything with that property at 19th and Western with that gate, and I want it. And he went to the county and he got two dumpsters, and they are there every Saturday morning, because he didn't want trash all over his city. It was important to him, and he's like, I want people to be able, that cannot afford it, to be able to throw trash away. And so he had the key, and he would open up when you called him and go down faithfully every weekend and let people dump there. And it's really sad and it's my heart, because I just talked to Renato two weeks ago about doing a story, because Frank wanted his story told on how we could keep Topeka beautiful and get rid of that trash. And he let everybody and anybody come. So I would just like to let the family know that my sympathy and my heart goes out to them, and it's great to have people like that.
And that's a Chesney Park area that made, he made all the difference in the world for that, that one area of our community. Councilman Emerson, Councilwoman Dela Isla.
Sylvia, we are both celebrating people today, because I had two small comments. One of them was, I was at the Fiesta VIP, it was amazing to see how our community comes together. The queen is beautiful, and the king is just, they were just glowing yesterday while they were giving out the awards, and it was a privilege to be there. Also, in my district, Heartland Park continues to bring events on a regular basis. We have had several exotic car clubs come into the community, and every time that they come, they're staying in hotels and they're, they're supporting our community. So thank you to Heartland Park, they've really turned things around, they're starting to look great out there. Thank you for that. And then on, on an echo of what Councilwoman Ortiz was saying, Topeka has suffered significant losses, not only that we lose Frank Hoag, but we lost Marge Heaney, who was, they used to call her the unofficial mayor of Topeka. You would know her wherever she would go. She had her hat, she had her feather, and she had her attitude. And she was a mentor to many, carried rocks in her purse to give to every child that she could come in contact with. She made sure that countless children had access to musical instruments. She was part of supporting the Women's Fund. I mean, there's just so many things. She was an advocate for women, she was, she was a force to be reckoned with, and I consider myself privileged to be one of her mentees and, and for the life that she has left behind and for the energy that she's left this community with. In addition to that, we also lost Lonnie Williams. Lonnie Williams was an advocate for so many that did not have a voice. Lonnie was part of helping establish the funds that were scholarships in the Living the Dream Foundation. He helped countless African-American individuals find employment. He was an advocate, silent advocate, for so many people that felt like they did not have a voice. And our city mourns. Our city mourns these losses of these sons and this adoptive daughter of Topeka that have left an impact. And I would just like to encourage everybody in their memory and in the memory of Frank and people like them that so selfless they gave of themselves, to continue doing your part in contributing to the fabric of this great community.
Thank you. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. We truly have lost some giants in our community. I'll, I'll share just a real brief story. For a period of time, I had the pleasure of working at the United Way, and I could never see Marge Heaney over the Cube Farm in the middle of our floor, but you could see her little feather bobbing around. And if that feather was moving around the office, you snapped to attention and did whatever she asked immediately. That's just how important she was to our community. A quick devil's advocate thought on the fireworks. I do support having a conversation there, however, if we stop selling them in the community, in the city, people will just go buy them in the county, and they will continue to shoot them off. So why I do agree, a conversation is probably warranted, stopping selling them or shortening the time they're being sold in the city, I don't know that that will create any real change, because they're available relatively close just outside the city limits. One real quick point of excitement, the Evel Knievel Museum has only had 15% of its visitors from Topeka. That means the vast majority of folks going to the Evel Knievel Museum are from outside our community, our state, and even our country. You talk about the things that we're striving to accomplish in this Topeka and becoming a tourist attraction in the Midwest. I think that is a perfect example of what we can accomplish. Only 15% of their visitors have been from Topeka. Everybody else is outside. I think that's wonderful. Have a great week, everybody.
Thank you. I want to mention three events that occurred actually within less than the last week. Last Thursday was a groundbreaking for Camp Kawabunga at the Topeka Zoo, probably one of the most significant things among, within our city, budget planning, programming that we'll be doing, that'll be happening within the next year. Very exciting. This is some of our half-sent sales tax use, but also then the friends at the zoo and the corporate gifts are just significant. So it's a great public-private partnership, and it's a great thing for the zoo, for our quality of life. And then last Friday, we had the ribbon cutting for the Seward Avenue Street, a major event in the community, again, a major street, the most, one of the, perhaps the most important in Oakland. And the most important thing is, it was open before the Mexican Fiesta. So little timing there, but very significant, and travel it if you haven't. It's a beautiful street, a lot of amenities, how we upgrade the level of our streets. And then last Friday night, we had the unveiling of the new lighting, the water tower. And again, that's our, the city's water tower built in 1942. It was decommissioned in 1993 because it was no longer usable, and it's, and one of those things, fortunately, we didn't demolish it, because now it's really a landmark of our city, and to have the lighting on it, that, that creates excitement and new interest for our community. So three great things in less than a week, very significant. That completes the announcements. We go to public comment. Mr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governing Body. That water tower is built to supply water to Forbes Field back in 42 when it was built. I talked about this a little bit earlier, but I'm going to reemphasize some of it. In, in watching the budget process this year and seeing the 100,000 that was cut out of social spending, I, I remember, I didn't comment on it that night, but I was appalled that we're sainting for minnows when we could be hunting for groupers and much larger game. We have so much money in this budget that I see that we could get so much more efficiency out of, especially with our street department and the contractors and how these streets are designed. You know, one of the questions I've got before the council is, I found out we're spending $1.8 million on our engineering department with the streets and public works. I'm going, why aren't they designing the streets, or at least part of it? Or are they doing all the construction management? Or are we being billed by one firm at $210 an hour for engineers, which is more than we, we bill as attorneys? I'm going, I don't understand how these costs can get so out of control unless we just are not paying attention. And, and I saw double cost on, on design contracts on California, which I got interested in because of Mr. Emerson, and, thank you, Mr. Emerson. And I, I was appalled that the costs were going from $200,000 estimates on up to $408,000 just on one contract. And I said, how many of these are there? How many times are we doing this as a city? How are we allowing this to go on without asking the tough questions? And yeah, it has to be at management, but you know, the council is the board of directors. You manage the city, actually, you delegate to a city manager, but you, you never delegate away your responsibility of that oversight. So I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just saying, I personally was appalled at the numbers I was seeing. I found out that the Mr. Turnip Seed, the firm there, Finian Turnip Seed, charged 3% on doing Golf Park and Fremont Hill. And I don't look at those projects as that much tougher than California. Both of them are part of High Crest, so I've paid a lot of attention to that. Now, as a president, but I, I think we have a long ways to go before I'm satisfied that we're really digging into numbers and getting efficiencies and accountabilities. I also reiterate that, and I've talked to some contractors about this, and I've talked to a lot of citizens about it, they like the idea of letting more of this go to privatization as far as the repairs, and seeing how the private sector does it, and see if they do a better job of fixing potholes, fixing them quicker, making sure they last. And I think, I think these are, I think it's time, when we've got six people up for election, some are running, some aren't, and we're looking at city manager positions, I think this is the time to have these discussions. I don't think it's time to put it off. I think it's time to ramp it up and start ringing more productivity out of our budget, our street department, how we look at things. Let's get the citizens involved and start asking them, what do they think? You know, we're bringing in interns from KU, the MPA program? Good. They're really good. I know, I went through that program, and I'll tell you, it's a tough program to get into, at least it used to be. So I think that we've got minds here in Topeka that will help, but you know, we have to have this discourse. We have to start talking about numbers and, and really getting the efficiencies out. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. That completes public comment this evening. Then we have two executive sessions. If the city attorney would give us the parameters for the first one, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for consultation with legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters as justified by KSA 75-4319 subsection B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, interim city manager Doug Gerber, Finance and Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Planning Director Bill Fyander, and myself.
All right. Is there a motion along those parameters? Councilman Jensen moves to go into executive session. Councilman Jensen moves to go into executive session on those parameters. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in the favor, raise your right hand.
Nine, yes.
Yes, we will go into executive session then when the room is clear. Council, why don't we take a quick break if we need to, for, while the room is clear.